Call us to order at 6:00. And we're going to start this open session by announcing that we're going to be going into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with all unions excluding police and fire. And then, passed under laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, verse 2. To discuss strategy with respect to non-union personnel COVID premium pay. Item two on executive session is to conduct strategy with respect to negotiations with non-union personnel, town manager. And I declare to not go into executive session could prejudice the position of the board.
Second.
All those in favor by well called?
Scott Price, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Zelinski, aye.
Taylor, aye.
And Brown, aye. And we'll return at 7:00 PM to resume our meeting or shortly thereafter if we're delayed.
Do you leave here?
Yes.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303 or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638 or meganet.net.
And I'd like to start the meeting by, if you'd all join me, with the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we just returned from executive session where we discussed strategy with respect to collective bargaining with all unions excluding police and fire and to discuss strategy with respect to non-union personnel for COVID premium pay. And on item number two, we discussed, conducted strategy with respect to negotiations with non-union personnel of town manager. And now we are going to discuss the reorganization of the select board. So, welcome to our new select board members, Scott Zelinski.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great to have you. And we had a great run with Megan, but she had to move on and now you're going to take over her spot.
Literally.
Yep, literally. So, we have had a kind of a tradition as of late of chairs serving two-year terms. And I think Doug Jones, was Doug Jones the first to start it? I'm not sure, but Megan also did that. And I'm willing to do that if the board is so inclined to have me do that. I'd also be happy to consider if you don't think a year is enough and it's time for somebody else to give it a try. I think Nancy Taylor is a capable chair. She's interested in the job, but before I make any motions or make any statements, I would be happy to solicit the input of the board for their feelings about the one-year versus the two-year type of term. Anybody have anything to?
No, certainly there have been two-year terms served several times in the last 10 years, certainly. So that, I don't see that as a problem. And there's some benefit in that, you know, after a year, you pretty much got it down as to what the routines are and working with our town staff. So I think there's some benefit in having some experience.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I do think that it's good to keep it up sometimes. And I would like to nominate Nancy as chair of the select board.
Okay.
If she's willing to take that nomination.
Let's second that.
I'll accept the nomination. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of having Nancy be the chair?
Aye.
I'm willing to.
Aye.
Good.
Excellent. I think.
Thank you, Nancy. And we also should be discussing our committee assignments.
Um, I think we need, yeah, I think we need a vice chair. So, I would nominate Angela Scott Price to be my vice chair.
Excellent.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Ladies are taking over.
We're taking over.
You know, that's going in the paper, Doug, right?
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you, board, and I will do my very best to serve the board and the town really well.
Great.
So, the first, does anyone have any proclamations? I don't believe that we have any in our packets.
I don't think we have any proclamations.
How about recognitions?
Well, I'd like to recognize and comment that we have really good quality staff, department heads, employees. I know the town is in a tumultuous time right now. And I just want the town employees to know that we respect and appreciate your service and especially during this difficult time where we're going to be going through some changes at the top here, but that's mostly impactful to us. And I think I have every confidence that Assistant Acting Town Manager Peter Johnson-Staub will do an excellent job. He's already shown that he's fully capable of doing the job. So, I just want to put that out there, that there's no big plan to make big changes around town. The only change was the dynamic between the town manager and the select board wasn't working, and that's the reason. It wasn't because the town is broken. It's certainly functioning very well. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just follow on that very briefly?
Yes.
First of all, thank you, Doug, for saying that. I know you mean it, and I think it means a lot to the staff to hear that from the board. And I just want to echo the comment. You know, it is, it does cause some anxiety when this sort of transition takes place at the top. And I've certainly done my best to try to assure the department heads that they have my confidence and that they're doing a terrific job. And I really appreciate the board saying that publicly. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And other recognition, do board members have a particular recognition that they'd like to make for any?
Well, I guess I should mention that yesterday I attended the Eagle Court of Honor for Logan Moniz. And it was really quite inspiring. He's a very mature young man, and his comments and his acceptance were pretty impressive.
Great.
So, anyway, I just, on your behalf, attended it and read the proclamation that we all issued.
Right. Thank you for that. Any other recognitions or we move to announcements? Nancy, you're in charge, so.
I was just going to ask the question that I think you're supposed to hand me the gavel.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm waiting patiently to use this thing?
All right.
All right. So let's start with reports. Beach committee update.
Maggie Clayton, Beach Superintendent. The Beach Committee and I discussed, and I felt that I should share, the hiring process update. We are making our way to prepare for a fully functional season to the best of our ability. And we've already had four days' worth of interviews for new hires, both in the parking attendant sector of our department and lifeguards. We are intentionally hiring extra parking attendants to accommodate, once again, the sunset hours at Old Silver Residence Lot and the Chappaquoy Beach sticker parking lot, as well as staffing parking lots in the event that we might not have lifeguards. Those numbers are obviously not final, and we are continuing to accept applications. In addition to our per diem sub-list, which I instituted as a lifeguard supervisor about five years ago, we added an opportunity for returning staff to come back as a part-time employee. So rather than a five-day-a-week-scheduled shift or no guaranteed-hours substitute per diem list, they will commit to two to four shifts a week. That's a way for us to retain our experienced staff and understand that they continue to grow and move within their future career opportunities with internships or other employment such as that. So, I'm happy to field any questions that the board has. We have another day of interviews tomorrow for lifeguards, though. And we are instituting a additional session of the lifeguard training course, which will be intensive the first week of work, allowing anyone who is 15 can take the course, but anyone who is 16 and passes the course on that Friday will be eligible to join the staff and fill out payroll paperwork to begin work as soon as Saturday, July 2nd.
I have one question.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes. Was there any luck with hiring any of those lifeguards from Bourne as they canceled their program?
So, we did reach out to both the Recreation Director and the Bourne schools to try and forge a connection and say, "Short commute, still an opportunity to use your certification." I don't know if any of our interviews that are slated for tomorrow are coming from Bourne. I would have to double-check those applicants.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just how do we stand in terms of applications at this point?
So, the application numbers do not necessarily match the hiring numbers. We had over 48 parking attendant applicants, and that has turned into 25 new hires. The lifeguard applicants stand at 26, I believe. And so far, that's 10 new hires, but we have another day of interviews.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Has there been any correspondence with Joint Base Cape Cod with respect to their dependence or with these jobs posting?
I don't know of specific outreach to Joint Base Cape Cod, Mr. Lizelinski, but we have been promoting our positions with flyers, the Rave Smart 911 system, the town website, and the Beach Managers Cross Cape Meeting for sharing. No one has any extras to share, but that's the goal.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Maggie. Barbara Schneider?
I just want to add that in addition to everything Maggie's done and listed, we are doing some social media campaigning on fabulous Falmouth by simply reminding people that lifeguards come in all sizes and ages. And we're encouraging teachers who might want to earn a little extra money during the summer, they too can get certified in that day, that Monday after school ends and take on even part-time work during the summer. So, we're hoping that people can start to think a little differently. This isn't only about high school and college age, and we're certainly hoping that that plants a seed and maybe we get somewhere with that, too. We are not giving up. We want to see all 10 beaches staffed fully, and that is going to be our goal until such a time as we have to say we didn't make it, but we're going to keep trying.
Let me just back up to one piece on announcements. We are looking to set the date for a hearing on the removal of the town manager, but that date has not been established as of tonight. Public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. Since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Board of Selectmen may not, or the Select Board, may not participate in discussion of the topic. It is not appropriate to use public comment as a period to comment on any person's reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, disciplinary matters, or civil or criminal charges. Comments about job performance and decisions made are permissible. Anyone here for public comment? No? Okay. We will, I'm sorry. Sure.
Why was, why is Julian getting fired? We had no input. We pay him. So, I mean, I think we should evaluate him. You guys can't avoid fellow, fellow board members?
Thank you for your comments.
No problem. I just would like to know why, if you can email me.
Okay. Town managers preliminary report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, to begin with the public hearing, you have Timber Bowling Alley is seeking to add two additional lanes to their existing bowling alley license. The hearing has been posted properly for this evening, and the staff review of the application did not identify any concerns. On your agenda as well, you have committee reports, which are self-explanatory. The accessible place space is on your agenda for tonight, and Kathleen Haynes is here from the Disability Commission to describe to you the park as sort of a reminder. This is something that the board has heard about and endorsed in the past, but primarily the purpose for tonight's discussion is for the board to provide some direction to staff about the potential location for that site. There was a prior vote of the Select Board to place this facility at the Davisville Road Emerald, so-called Emerald House Properties. And I know Kathleen wants to talk to you about an alternative site that she's hoping we might be able to move on more quickly. As with any land use decision, there are a lot of considerations and details that go into that, which I will save for that agenda item. Also on your agenda tonight, we will be, again, discussing the policy for disposition of items valued at less than $10,000. And Town Council Moro O'Keefe and I have worked on crafting actually two policies to address this. And Ms. O'Keefe has consulted with the Inspector General and has, the result of that are these two policies that are before you. And I will say in, by way of preview, that the Inspector General has confirmed that we can craft a separate policy for firearms that is, that allows some more flexibility in terms of how the board may wish to craft a policy to dispose of firearms as a, as a unique item, both with respect to our disposal. Options are limited. We can't hold an auction. We're not licensed to sell guns. But also as a public policy matter, and I would note that we're carving new territory here. This isn't a clearly established aspect of the procurement law that has been decided upon, or there's no written guidance on it from the state. We're confident that we have a policy that will stand up to muster, and I know Ms. O'Keefe is willing to defend it. And so, we're pleased with the policies that we've drafted for your consideration for tonight. Hand-in-hand with that, of course, is an update on the status on procurement of police department weapons and the disposal of the surplus rifles that has been discussed. And that is something of a complicated matter. We do have an existing purchase order. The new rifles have been delivered, although they are still in their boxes. And while technically it may be reversible because we do not have a signed contract, it is going to be problematic for us, and I am recommending that we go ahead with the procurement as it was, as it was put forth in the purchase order, which does include the trade-in of the existing rifles. And you do have a memo in your packet from Powderhorn, which is the supplier. They were the low, they were the low quote for providing the new weapons and for trading in the surplus rifles. They have committed to selling those rifles only to members of law enforcement. And Chief Dunn has taken an informal poll of his officers, and we do have enough interest just within the Falmouth Police Department among the police officers to purchase all of the rifles that are being traded in. So that's the preview for your, for that agenda item. I'll skip ahead now to the Falmouth Housing Corp. application for $100,000 from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, of which the board are the trustees. This is for an existing single-family home that is 51 Esker Place. It is currently an affordable unit, but the deed restriction is subject to expiration, and so this is a request that would secure the affordability of this unit in perpetuity. And I am recommending approval of that. The consent agenda items, the staff review of licenses did not identify any concerns. The donation from Kane Productions is related to a planned photo shoot that was canceled at the last minute after a pretty significant amount of staff time was spent corresponding with the firm to work out logistics. So that was Phyllis in our office and the police department as well spent quite a bit of time trying to work out this photo shoot that ultimately was canceled, and they were kind enough to make a small donation in recognition of that. And that concludes my report. I'll have some supplemental comments at the end.
Thank you.
Do you want to ask if anybody's willing to put the consent agenda?
I think I will before we get into the hearings. But I think we should move forward and look at committee interviews. So we have four positions open on the Commission on Disabilities. One vacancy with the term until 6/24, two vacancies until 6/25, and one unexpired term until 6/23. until 6/24, two vacancies until 6/25, and one unexpired term until 6/23. We have two applicants. We have Rosemary Gagnon and Diana Moda. Rose, is Rosemary here?
Hi.
Come on up. Can you just tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in this committee?
I've been in town for about 40 years. I taught special needs for 20. I work for a company called Living Independently Forever, which is folks with physical disabilities, intellectual, developmental, so I'm familiar. I kind of want to try to help out and get some good stuff going for people that need different things.
Excellent. And where were you as a special education teacher?
I worked at Upper Cape Tech.
Any questions from the board?
And then Cape Cod Collaborative after that.
Oh, you were at the collaborative?
I was.
I have no questions. I thought the information in the packet was sufficient. Happy to have you on the committee.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll entertain any nominations?
I'd be happy to nominate Rosemary Gagnon for the term expiring June 30th of 2024.
Thank you.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Thank you. Okay, Diana.
Hello.
Tell us a little bit about you and your interest in this commission.
Well, I've always taken care of people that have had disabilities, and I had a stop because I was tired of the abuse and the neglect. So if I can get on this commission and advocate for them and get what they need, I will. Done. Thank you.
Any, hold on, don't go anywhere. Any questions from the board, just in case?
None. None.
No, it's for us to ask the question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Does anyone have any questions?
Well, I do have one question, and it's going to be regarding your interaction with other committee members.
Yep.
Are you going to be able to consider their views and, you know, be patient?
Um, you know, I was trying to avoid this, but Doug, I'm perfectly capable of acting normal. I'm not crazy, okay? And I want to tell you something right now. I can talk to anybody. People like me, I don't judge anybody, and I treat everybody with dignity and respect. Does that answer your question, Doug?
It does, and that's going to be important if you want to be on the committee.
Doug? Thank you. Any further questions? Can I entertain any nominations? Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I move that we appoint Diana Moda to the Commission on Disabilities for a term expiring June 30th, 2023.
Second. I've got a nomination in a second. All those in favor?
Give it a try.
Nay. Three to two, you're on the committee. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here in the audience that has their application listed under the consent agenda? Okay, why don't you come up for a minute? You are?
My name is Devon Matar. I am representing Timber.
Oh, that's for the after Tulane.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood the question then.
No, you're, no, you're right.
No, you're okay.
Oh, okay. My apologies.
So the reason the chair is asking is because...
But, but you're under a public hearing.
Yeah.
You're not under the consent agenda.
Okay.
We're just a little bit early, so I was going to ask anybody who is under the consent agenda to speak so that they didn't have to wait.
Okay. My apologies.
Okay. Not, not a problem. Are you expecting anyone else to come for your public hearing?
No.
Okay, then let's do it right now. Come right back up.
Is it okay that we're five minutes early on that?
I believe it is if we don't have anyone else who is here to represent the applicant. I'm assuming we can start five minutes early?
You should wait until 7:30.
Okay. All right. We will wait five minutes.
Okay, great.
Sorry.
No worries.
Poor guy. Yeah, you guys will let me know that.
You want to move?
I think, I think we're going to move the consent agenda, and I'm going to read the licenses and see if the board chooses to hold any of them. Application for a new common vectorola license, Shiverick Cafe and Bar located 285 Main Street, Falmouth. Application for a special one-day wine and malt liquor license Woods Hole Historical Museum, 80 Church Street, Saturday, 6/25/2022. Application for a special one-day wine and malt liquor license Food Truck Festivals of America, Cape Cod Food Truck and Craft Beer Festival, Cape Cod Fairgrounds, Saturday, Application for a special one-day wine and malt liquor license Shipwrecked Cornhole Tournament, Shipwrecked and Heights Hotel Parking Lot, Saturday, 6/11/22. Application for a special one-day wine and malt liquor license Shipwrecked, Road Race Afterparty, Shipwrecked and Heights Hotel Parking Lot, Sunday, 8/21/22. Take a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Administrative orders, since I still have time. Vote to accept a donation in the amount of $335 from Kane Productions to the Conservation Department Donation Account.
I do have one, just one quick question. Is there, just curious, is there a reason why they chose the Conservation Department for this specific donation?
You know what? I'm not sure about that. They were going to be on conservation, you know, through, near a conservation area for the proposed shoot, so I don't know if it was related to the mission of the company. I did not, I did not hear what their reason was.
Maybe they felt like they had used some of their time and helped them out on that.
I move approval with appreciation.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. All right, I'm going to read the, the notice, the public notice of a hearing. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 140, Section 177, 178, 179, and 180 of the general laws as amended that Town Hall Partners LLC, doing business as Timber, has applied for an amendment to the bowling alley license located at 23 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass. A hearing will be held in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, May 23rd, 2022, at 7:30 PM on the above application. And I believe that this was published in the Falmouth Enterprise, although it, it doesn't say so, and it doesn't give a date.
That's correct.
Give me two more minutes, and we'll, we'll get you started.
I think since the applicant is here, it must be close enough, but I'll defer to Town Council.
Well, Town Council said 7:30. We'll give it another minute, and, and we'll start.
All right.
Could you introduce yourself, and you can...
I can again. For the record, my name is Devon Matar. I am the labeled General Manager of Timber. I'm here representing them for this amendment. Would you like me to explain?
Go ahead.
Okay. So we are asking to amend the bowling alley license from 10 to 12. The original license was under the wrong listing of 10. The original bowling alleys consist of 12 bowling, bowling lanes, which is asking for that change to be made.
Easy enough.
I've been in there a few times. It had 12 lanes.
Correct, sir.
Any questions from the board? Anyone here from the public to speak to this?
I move we close the hearing?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Report from the Falmouth Cultural Council. As you know, and as is stated on the agenda, you'll have up to 15 minutes for your presentation.
I assume you don't want me to read the report.
You can read parts that you want to focus on, highlight important things, however you want to do it.
All right. So the Falmouth Cultural Council is one of 329 cultural councils across the state. We are funded by the Mass Cultural Council and regulated by both the Mass Cultural Council and the Town of Falmouth. We received in...
Did you introduce yourself? I'm sorry.
What?
Did you introduce yourself, just so the folks at home?
Oh, my name is Marilyn Roland. I'm...
I know your name, but...
I know you know.
And pull the mic down just a bit, so we can hear you better.
I'm Chair of the Falmouth Cultural Council. I have also brought Alice Kuchimba and Jane Parhiala, who, Alice is the secretary, and Jane is the previous Chair and also the Chair of our arts, art market in the summer. So they might want to add something at some point. Okay, so what, we, we get money from the Mass Cultural Council to distribute to local artists and organizations to do projects related to arts, sciences, humanities, interpretive sciences, and the humanities. They make applications through the Mass Cultural Council. We receive those applications, and we review them for relevance to the local community. Sometimes we get applications from afar, other parts of the state, but most of them are, are local, or the event will be local, even if the organization is coming in from elsewhere. And then we look at the funds that we have, and we divide it up among those applicants. As we stated here, we received in, in the fall of 2021, 34 grand applications totaling $28,808, of which we had $7,300 to distribute. So we had to evaluate those applications. One of the things we do as a local cultural council to increase our funds is to have the Falmouth Art Market during the summertime, and we raise about $2,000 each summer, which is added to the total. So we were able to give out not $7,300, but $10,458, and, and we felt that, that was good. We, we would like more money, and as we pointed out in the application, we are going to be applying to see if we can have the town match those figures so that we can give out more money. These applications, there's a list of them on the second page of the report. The amounts of money that we're giving out are very small. The highest one is 750. The lowest one, I believe, is $148, $178. And people have said to us, it's, it's hardly worth applying for a grant for such a small amount of money. But we really do want to encourage, we, the list of things we've been able to support, we think is very important. Music, music groups, museum exhibits, art exhibits, puppet shows, all kinds of things that either reduce the admission fee that the sponsoring organization is able to provide or eliminate entirely. So we feel it's very, very effective, but, but we could do a lot more with a lot of money. We could do a lot more if we could raise that amount. We used to give out about $1,000. We are very successful in getting applications. Other cultural councils across the state don't necessarily receive as many applications as we do because we have a very active arts community and because we promote it. And, and so I think that we have a successful history. I know, Alice, do you want to say anything more?
I think you covered the issue.
You need to come to the mic, please, Alice.
That would be great. Thank you.
And please introduce yourself when you get there.
I'm Alice Kuchimba, and I'm Secretary of the Falmouth Cultural Council. Thank you for your time and attention. The only thing I wanted to say is that there has been, because of the pandemic, a loss of, on average, according to Mass Cultural Council figures, 24 gigs for our gig economy cultural workers, an average of $10,000 of lost income. What we're hoping to do, there have been some letters we've received from local artists of different types who really have struggled because of the pandemic. We're looking to the town, through the town meeting in the fall, to help us make right those people who've lost that income, and we're really looking for the Select Board to take the lead, to say the arts are part of a vital economy, and that the time is ripe for some matching funds to make these cultural workers whole again. Thank you.
Jane? Questions, questions from the board?
I have a question.
I just want to say one more thing, is that we, the art market is a separate entity underneath the Falmouth Cultural Council, which we invented in, I think, 2006. It's been going on for a long time, and we've amassed some money that we hope to benefit the community. The art market charges a low fee to vendors, lower than most art shows, and we hire musicians to entertain the people. And we've, we've found that's very effective in not only supporting the local arts community, but, you know, giving something back to the town. We applied for a special events application for the art market, and the town is charging us $2,000 for that special application fee, which is our entire profit for the summer. So we're hoping that some effort can be made to reduce that amount of money so that we can put more money back into the funding of groups through the Falmouth Cultural Council.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Dan.
Is there any ARPA funds that could be applied to this endeavor?
So that's a good question. There is some funding from ARPA that is very flexible for any municipal purpose. We would just need to look at anti-Aide provisions and make sure that, that it passes muster with, with that. So that's something that we, I could be, I'd be happy to explore with Town Council.
Do you need a vote from the board to support that work, or?
Well, I, you know, I, I think we talked about potentially a Select Board agenda item to talk about ARPA funding generally, so perhaps that is an idea that we can discuss at that time.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think they need a vote to actually look into it, though.
Okay.
Mr. Patterson?
I just want to take the opportunity to thank the Falmouth Cultural Council for all of the activities and for all the people that you support, because it certainly does enhance our community tremendously. I know my children greatly appreciated when they were growing up here in Falmouth, and my wife and I, too, for that first...
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. I, I would like to point out that we all work for nothing, and it's not only the giving out of the grants, but it's all year long, the record-keeping. I'm sure you know all about that, the record-keeping, making sure people get paid and making sure that the final reports are done, making sure everything goes smoothly, so I think it's a good effort. Thank you so much, Sam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Okay, report on the Commission on Disabilities. Chair Kathleen Haynes is here, and Kathleen, you as well, have 15 minutes.
Do you have a mic to work?
They do.
They're listening, they're working, they're...
Really?
Apparently you're...
Mine's on.
I don't think these microphones amplify in the room, do they?
No.
They, they should. When this is turned up, it should.
Okay.
So can we leave that down for her?
So...
How about, can you take one? There's another one.
There's an extra mic. How far is that?
Oh, this one's farther, I think.
He's going to get your microphone. Okay, well...
Sorry about the math, but I'm a little bit...
Sure.
Kathleen, you might be able to come up here and use this mic.
There, he has one.
All right, everyone.
Yeah, yeah, I'll have to try the things. I know pretty much what I'm on here. So I'll introduce myself. Yeah, Kathleen Haynes, Chairperson of the Commission on Disabilities. We have different initiatives going, and we have different views, I think, on what the Commission really does.
Are you sure that mic's on?
It is.
Okay.
I'll take, I'll write it. So anyhow, the Commission on Disabilities doesn't set policies, they suggest things. We don't have money to make people's lives better. We do what we can in terms of finding initiatives that work for everybody in town that's disabled. So one of the biggest initiatives this year has been working with the Beach Committee and Maggie on providing moby mats for the beaches. So we have gone, since January, we've been working on how many mats there are presently, how many mats that Maggie provided, the money that the town appropriated, and what the Commission on Disabilities we've been able to appropriate. So we chose to spend up to $21,000. I presented that to Jen Mullin, who, excuse me, but she's very new about my presenting it. I am not, do have the Chairperson, so I should not be presenting anything. And I explained to her, Maggie works full-time, plus does the beach, and if I can help out by giving quotes or finding out the information on moby mats, then that's appropriate. So I did get three quotes, which you discussed. One was under $10,000, which is a company that has dealt with that town down below. The commission guy that quotes for them. One was $10,900, and one was $12,000 some odd, $12,015. So obviously, they're going to vote a little bitter, so I'm happy that we could provide five mats that are 50 feet long, five feet wide and 50 feet long, that will help stop all the beaches with what's already been bought, what Maggie's bought this year. All of the beaches should be able to have a moby mat that goes with packing mat right to the water. And that's all ten beaches. It excludes people's path, because people's path is too steep right now. To be able to remove that, it would be too dangerous. So all of the beaches will be perfectly able to accommodate nature and other mobility disabilities in the beaches this year. And with the help of the Beach Committee, they're going to put handicap accessible picky tables for the bodies, they have handicap accessible. So we've worked together with them, and I think this year, the beaches in Falmouth will be very inclusive, and it'll be very attractive to beachgoers who are disabled, both visitors and townspeople alike. So that has been, like, the big thing this year, making sure that that was accomplished and being done yet. I think we got it under the gun. Hopefully, by July, both the beaches will have the mats. It's just a matter of Jen worrying them, or Maggie worrying them, having a pain for our town. So, and I should explain, the money that we have to appropriate, the $200 that somebody is buying for packing in Falmouth and handicap accessible spot, comes to the Commission on Disabilities. So we can accumulate quite a bit of money per year. And right now, we have about $42,000 in our account, thanks to the people who pack. It might as well be true. But it'd help us with being able to accommodate different things. We provided money to the promos, with the lift that they have now that goes to the press box, things like that. And we are open to different organizations who, the way the law reads with the money that we spend, it has to be able to help the greatest amount of disabled. So by using the money for the moby mats, that provides a greater number of disabled the ability to expand their horizons and be included in different activities. So like the press box, it allows interns who are disabled to be able to be scouts and whatever, be able to be in the press box who are disabled where before they couldn't have that ability to be a disabled person who is able to be an intern. So the monies that we provide are of very important reason. So we opened it up to organizations in Falmouth who have disabled clients, whatever, who are looking for funds, who do things to help a good amount of disabled apply to us for a grant, and we can accommodate that up to a certain amount. We didn't only provide up to a certain amount at a time, which created this situation because it was a purchase that was going to affect a lot of people. So we didn't take a vote, and the whole commission wanted that money spent. So we do have a chance to spend more, but in smaller amounts. We started the formula together, how much is going to be spent per year. But that's the biggest thing. Shiver's pond, Jen, I'm just kind of stopped. He called and gave me some videos to look at about what they're going to use for kayak with disabled on Shiver's pond. And we looked at different types of... It's hard to explain. It's sort of like a transfer bench that goes down in the slopes, and a board, a piece will slide out, so a person who's disabled can lower themselves gradually to more and then lift themselves from the bar right into the kayak and be able to go on to the pond.
We just approved one recently.
That's the one that we were, yeah. So that was something the Commission helped out initially at, what would be the best type. We also have been working with the town down with, not written with you yet, we're proposing that the town down to a self-study on what is accessible in Falmouth buildings, town-owned Falmouth buildings, and what isn't, and what should be to meet the ADA standards. A study was done many years ago. I have it told, and it's somewhere in the hands of the ABW. Whether it actually exists or not, I don't know, but we want to propose that self-study be done and provide you with the documents on what the self-study is. And there are different grants that'll help pay for the study to be done. The Mass Office on Disability has a study, a grant that is done every year that you can apply to. They, once the self-study is done, and if there are areas that need to be corrected in the town, there are further grants that'll help pay for those updates. So the list I gave you in the packets, they tell you exactly what needs to be up to code and what isn't, and what is, is up to town. That could afford the initiative that we'd like to see the town undertake. We understand it costs money to do so, and we recommend giving the grants and such that we do it. And we could hire a consultant, I gave you a consultant's name that happened to contact me, and it was an example of what that type of consultant can do, how they can reach consultants by means. But it shows what consulting can do for the town and get your self-study done, how important it is. And it's just little things we've done ever since. We were hoping that telephones would be moved on Palmer Out, that it may be like easier for people like me who don't have telephones on sidewalk that's actually impossible right now. Everybody knows about that. Playspace is a big item which we will discuss when I get done. We had had complaints from people who have handicap vans that the striping and the handicap parking is not wide enough. The 8 feet, which is what ADA is required to do that active access for. But Jurey has nicely improved that. It's made of 8 feet at the senior center parking. The rec center parking is going to have them, they're going to include, what about the lines that they have now? If they're loose striping, so the handicap vans will have an eight-inch wide loading zone. And we hope to be able to do this with the town parking here at the town hall and other town spaces that the parking strip is just as wide enough for the person coming out of the van, get down there, and be able to turn to get any access sidewalk from there. So 8 feet is going to be moving in town, and we'll be doing the charge. And those are the important ones. We did do some work with people that began it. They contacted the Commission on Disabilities. We were able to get new signs put up, new striping done. The wall was taken out so that moby mats can come to the parking lot and then go down to the water. We had actually moved a section of the wall that was built, put in just recently, actually, in the last couple of years. The Jurey's crew went down there, put the signs up, got the wall renewed, ready in the parking, and Nancy was ready to go. They had these clams of nice little ladies down there. So those are the things. People contact me all the time with different things that they need done, and the Commission looks at what they need, and we find a way to solve it. It just happens, I know you're very well enough to know what's in his purview, and things get done a lot because of Jurey. So a shout out to Jim and that I would have happened for anything they do.
Thank you, Kathleen. Questions from the board?
Just to clarify, did you say that the mats are ordered?
No, the mats have to be ordered. I just presented the three estimates as Friday.
Okay.
Actually, I gave Jen the last one today.
Okay.
But I gave her the 90,000, less than $10,000 Friday, and now Maggie has supported those.
I see, okay.
Maggie and Jurey, thank you for that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And thank you for your work, Kathleen, on the commission. I've been lucky enough to see it firsthand. It's been hard. I haven't been to the last two because of work.
We had came to a couple of the, four of them.
Yes.
A monk passed away.
Yes.
We need to build the commission as much as possible, because when one person's out, they go to the court.
The quorum goes, right.
And with Denise Coven leaving, we now cannot have an ADA coordinator in the town.
Right.
So that spot, if we had not just put two people on, we would not be needing it.
At all, right.
She's a voting member of the commission.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We will move on to the accessible play space site selection. See if you were paying attention.
This is my baby. I have one question for Peter. I was told Friday that affordable housing cannot go at Emerald, you know, Emerald property. Was that true?
So there are two parcels of land, there are two different parcels on Davisville Road, 67 and 81 Davisville Road. And the 81 Davisville Road, now I'm, you know what? I can't remember which is which.
81 is where we want to go.
So the parcel that has the actual Emerald House on it?
It's 67.
That does have Article, that has Article 97 protections on it. So that would require, it's correct, that affordable housing could not be built on the parcel that has Article 97 protections. It was taken for open space and recreation. So that would require a town meeting vote and relief from the state legislature if there was going to be housing on that particular parcel. So it's not, so it's the same restriction that applies to the other parcel that you've brought forward. Zero share and have has those same protections. So that's, you know, that's one of the issues for the feasibility study and for the board to consider is whether at the Davisville Road properties, whether you want to limit affordable housing to the parcel that has no Article 97 restrictions on it, which would make for a quicker and easier process, or if you want to contemplate housing on both parcels. So that's among the issues to be determined. And if I may, to just continue the conversation, and then I know, you know, I think Kathleen may want to speak to the zero share and have parcel as well. But just in terms of context for this discussion, again, the Select Board has previously, the initial proposal from the Disability Commission and Kathleen was to put the accessible play space at the Davisville Road properties. I think it may have crossed over and had a portion on each of the two parcels, if I remember correctly. And the board may recall that we had a conversation about a master plan and that this is almost nine acres of land. It was identified by staff as the best opportunity for affordable housing, and we talked about having a feasibility study done and having some community engagement to determine how best to use this precious town-owned land for this combination of purposes, which is the accessible play space, affordable housing, and community gardens. We do have some feedback from an engineer that was retained through a partnership with Mass Housing Partnership, and we are poised to begin community engagement on the housing elements and the master plan for that parcel. We now have our housing coordinator on board, and she's going to be instrumental in guiding us through that process along with a consultant, a community engagement consultant, because we really want to make sure that, you know, that the community makes informed choices, not just based on, you know, what staff says or a handful of the butters say, but really looking at the big picture and all of the community needs that we might want to be addressing at this parcel.
But we're not there yet, is what I'm hearing you say.
We're about to start the community engagement to look at, you know, what's the size and scope of the housing? Do we want to limit it to one parcel? Do we want to consider going through that difficult process to lift the Article 97 restrictions on one of the two parcels?
But you should also make it clear that once, if you do that restriction, lift the restriction, you have to sell that land to be developed. The town will often develop it. So you also have to go to town meeting to get the vote to sell the land for consultant, developer to do it, and that can buy you...
Yes, so the way that the town would pursue affordable housing, under any scenario on any land, would be to issue an RFP, and in all likelihood, staff will be recommending a sale of the land to a private owner to develop and own the housing. That's correct.
And that you've already taken a vote, the place base would be over there. So you'd be taking away the place base that disabled children in Falmouth need for housing. I totally agree with you, but you'd be selling the land, and you'd be taking away the land that you already voted for the Commission on Disabilities and increase the place base to use. Now, it's voted by the Select Board.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sure. So certainly, I am not proposing, staff are not proposing, to eliminate the accessible play space at these properties. What I am suggesting that we should study is how best to place both of those uses at these properties. So Baron, part of the process is we now, there are now two parcels of land. Those parcels could be reconfigured in, you know, myriad ways, because the town...
We had a survey, and it was determined that the only space that was really good for the place base was at the age 81 preschool, because that was the flat section. The housing going back the way we wanted to originally, that's going around. Our architect clearly wrote it, and it was their knowledge. So then we go behind the place bases. That was done, and then Irish toys and housing advocates don't want the place base in backyard. And I heard that at a Select Board meeting, that we said in a Select Board meeting by a Select Board... a select board member, I don't remember who pointed, but he said, that's why the place base is shifted and is nowhere. So that's why I went and was investigating properties of the place base we go on, which is how we get to Sharon and Lane, or Sharon Lane, Captain Lane and Sharon, which is property the town owns. In fact, there's no way to control it there.
So when you're looking at the, creating a master plan, you'll be considering what you have from the Commission on Disabilities in terms of where a, um, the place base, the safe place base would fit, am I correct?
Right. So my understanding of, of what we are investigating is we are pursuing the directive of the select board from a couple of years ago where they said pursue all three of these uses. So that's, that's what we are proceeding to do. So as far as I'm concerned, placing the accessible place base and affordable housing on these two parcels is the direction that we've been given, and until we hear further from, or otherwise from the board, that is what we will continue to pursue. Now, what will be feasible at the end of the day? You know, is it possible that the result of the feasibility comes back and says you can't do both, you have to do one or the other? Maybe, but that's why we do the study. And, and again, it won't be for, you know, it won't be for the acting town manager to decide. It will be for the select board to decide, and this may be a good opportunity for me to mention as well. I think it's important, um, that the select board hears from the Recreation Committee with respect to the location of this accessible place base. It is essentially a park, and that is, you know, certainly within the domain of the Recreation Committee to, uh, to advise the select board. Not that it's their, you know, not that the Recreation Committee, they're an advisory committee to the select board, so I suggest you may want to seek their input on what is the best location for this accessible place base, again, with the technical information that we bring forward.
Could I just say to you one thing? Could we not use the term accessible place base and inclusive intergenerational place base? We have accessible place bases that are not found technically because a child can be in there, even though the servicing is wrong, but it is inclusive, intergenerational place base. There's a difference between inclusive and accessible.
Thank you.
Happy to do that, yep.
Thank you. That sort of runs me along. It's not correct. Because inclusive means a whole lot more accessibility to the children than just accessible. All right. But has the study been done? As with Mass, what are we supposed to do?
So we have an engineering, we have an engineering feasibility study that is sort of one of the building blocks. So a lot, a lot more work needs to be done to determine...
I would like to have been told that the study was done, since I'm the conduit between all this, and that there was the chance to do that instead of spending a lot of time using on different properties like the Sharon Lane, the T-Ticket, that is essentially not usable because you can't go and road it without taking property, but then remaining a body there, which is interior expenses in the town and the place base in everyone's. Right?
That, that may well be. As you know, you asked us to take a look at that property, and we did, you know, spend quite a bit of time. And what we found is that the access to the parcel on Sharon Ave is on a private road, and it is very narrow. And it, it appears that some private takings would be necessary to create the functional access that would be needed for that space. But it is a big chunk of land, um, so, you know, again, that's a, that's, that's another sort of complicated policy issue for the board to take a look at. You know, what is the, what, what do you, what is the long-term vision for that piece of property? Perhaps it's conservation land, um, but if it's anything other than conservation land, then at some point we are looking at that expense to create access.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Patterson.
Can I just mention that a number of years ago, that parcel was looked at for affordable housing? And one of the things that they noted was that there was some concern that natural heritage actually had some control over that property for, you know, endangered species, and I don't recall what they were, but I just wanted to mention you might want to explore that as well, as it, that could be a fly in the ointment, so to speak.
I've also suggested another parcel that's owned by St. Patrick's, it's behind the property of the town owns, that we happen to purchase, and it was a land in Manor Water Grant, up to a million dollars of state issues, that would help appropriate to buy that. But I, I've always preferred Emerald House. But it has been such a tumultuous process that it's, it's ridiculous. You know, we were, we were given a vote that the property where the old senior center was was going to be re-propertyd. And that turned out to be negative. Then we were told Emerald House was going to be a perfect property. And we had, we spent up to almost forty thousand dollars to get it designed, to do, uh, surveying and everything else. We've got copies of the place base down and look like, and it's sitting in my basement, rolled up in a file that's never been used, never even been shown to the public because nobody can agree on anything. I'd like a commitment that we can do this.
Uh, just, I would comment that I think maybe we, our vote was, maybe it was an error to have put this place base on eighty-one. Maybe we should have put it right behind the Emerald House on sixty-seven.
The reason it wasn't was because the land goes down.
Yeah.
And the cost to put, to level it was extensive. It's already, the, the way that the layout is now, just place bases, a million dollars more now because of building costs. To level the land out would be extremely expensive. That's why the eight one was chosen by the, the surveyor. And why it was designed the way it was, because it's really fine.
Right.
And that's the second point. I, I've had no problem building behind, but the problem is the cost of leveling the land to be able to put the place base there.
So you'll continue to work with the Commission on Disabilities as we move forward to find an appropriate space?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, I think that's part of the, you know, it is, it's complicated. You know, this piece of property and all of these uses combined may, does make for a complicated set of, of analysis and decisions. But I guess, you know, one of the, one of the ways that I see us moving forward is to bring forward some options for how can we get all of these uses on these parcels? And what are the costs and trade-offs of the, of the different allocations? You know, maybe we have an option that says you keep the, the place base where it was originally proposed, and you put all the housing in back. And maybe you look at another option that flips it the other way around. And, you know, maybe, it, it may well be that, um, you know, one of the considerations is, you know, normally if we lived in a flat community with lots of land, you know, we wouldn't dream of putting the place base in terrain that is going to make it very expensive. But maybe in the scheme of things, we say, you know what, even if it does double the cost, this is still the best site for the place base, and, and it's worth the investment to put it where it's more expensive. Again, it may, it may go the other way around. Maybe, maybe the housing goes in the back, and we say, look, we could have saved, you know, a million dollars on the housing had we put it right on the street front, but, you know, we have competing priorities, and we want to do all of these things at, at these properties. So that's, that's what the analysis and the community engagement is about.
Thank you, Kathleen, very much, and thank you for your work around this.
Yeah, you're, you're...
It's frustrating to hear this because it's still, there's no commitment that we're going to do it.
I feel as though the board is committed to it. I think it's the placement that continues to be the question. Am I correct?
Until you hear, until you tell me otherwise, the direction from the board is to pursue all of these uses.
Pursue it.
Yep.
So can we make a, a deal here where I'm going to be kept from the Moby finding it? Because we went over a year without anything, we're going to contact you here, and nothing was being told to us. So I would like to have a commitment that we're going to work on this, not just put it in my file cabinet, in your file cabinet.
I think, Kathleen, you've heard the commitment. I think you've heard the commitment from the board, even though we can't tell you exactly where it's going to be. And I think you've heard a commitment from the acting town manager to continue to consult with you as they move through this process.
All right. Is that, is not the turn?
Okay, and I...
For five years.
I, I think you have that commitment.
For five years.
Yes, the, the process has been admittedly slow. You haven't been left out. The, the process has just been stalled because of, you know, working through getting some funding for, um, the feasibility analysis and then, and getting that process started and the transition with the housing coordinator. But you have my commitment that we are going to move through a deliberate evaluation and community engagement process, and the Disability Commission will be a part of that.
Because you know, we've never asked the town president for this, and we've been a few asks for the money, which is a big price back. But we're willing to raise the money, which is why we don't want to spend extra money to level out the land. So that's, you know, I see.
Thank you, and thank you for your work, Kathleen.
Indeed.
Okay, we're going to move on to the discussion of select board policy for the disposition of items valued less than ten thousand dollars, and we have ten minutes.
So you have in your packet a draft policy, and the draft policy, as I mentioned, it carves out a special case for firearms. So this policy for disposition of surplus materials, supplies, and equipment, um, at the very end of the policy in subsection E, addresses commodities like firearms that are treated uniquely in the marketplace. The surplus supplies may be disposed of in a manner consistent with the purposes of the Procurement Act, chapter thirty B, notwithstanding the provisions of this policy. So the, the policy itself, I think, is fairly straightforward. The surplus property is declared, uh, surplus by the department heads and the town manager in writing. The list of equipment is initially offered to town departments. Town manager then determines the value of the surplus equipment. The town manager determines that the surplus, if, sorry, if the town manager determines the surplus property has no resale value, it can be disposed of at the least cost to the town. For surplus property that has a resale or salvage value, the town manager may dispose of the property pursuant to any of the procedures set forth below, as may be appropriate under the circumstances. And those procedures are to advertise the sale on the town's website and/or local newspaper, to use the surplus property as a trade-in, credit toward purchase, to donate the surplus supplies to a government entity.
Sorry to interrupt you. I was just signaling to Mr. Lowen that we've already approved the shipwreck application on the consent. We had a moment before a hearing, so we took it out of order.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Okay. Sorry about that.
No problem. So the surplus, uh, property can be donated to government entities or charitable organizations, and in limited circumstances and accord, and in accordance with an articulated public policy reason for doing so, the surplus supplies may be destroyed.
Questions on the draft policy? Comments?
I think the first one is fine with me. Any comments from anybody else?
No, I'm, I'm pleased to see this. I think we've moved it along. I think it represents the will of a lot of them, of the citizens of this town. So, you know, I, I...
So do I have a motion?
Well, I would, but I guess I have a procedural question. Does this have to be first presented and drafted and then voted on in a subsequent meeting? I was just thinking, maybe the, the fact that we put it out there, we could actually hold a, a hearing where people could provide public comment at a later date? I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm not trying to tell you.
No, it's a fair question. I'm, I'm, I, I, the, the Board of Selectmen, that's one of our things, that we set policy, and I, I don't know that we need to put it out in a regular form before we would vote it.
I, I don't believe there's, and town council can confirm if there is any legal requirement. I'm not aware of any legal requirement to do so. It has been a practice in the past, when there's a policy being adopted, that, um, that the policy be discussed, and then an opportunity for public input, and then adopted at a subsequent meeting. However, I, I do believe this, there was a prior draft policy. So, you know, certainly it's at the pleasure of the board if you want to continue it again, but I, I think you could look at this as the second meeting addressing this policy.
And this particular one, to me, seems pretty straightforward. I don't know if, if any other board members have, have questions, um, but this to me is, this one's straightforward.
Well, I would be happy to move approval.
Second.
In your second?
Yes. I believe we can.
So we have it. It's been moved in seconds.
We could, we could hear if you wanted to.
Well, this is time for public comment.
I'm sorry?
I mean, this would be the appropriate time for public comment.
Yes, yes, you can speak to this.
Oh, Kathleen, please introduce yourself, please.
Yes, I will. Richard Dubey, Precinct Six. It just, um, Mr. Johnson stopped. Could you just go over the part about destruction of property? Because you were sort of interrupted.
Sorry about that. I was just trying to wave Mr. Lowen out, and it kind of got, made a distraction.
So in the, in the proposed policy, it does allow for in limited circumstances and in accordance with an articulated public policy, sorry, in accordance with an articulated public policy reason for doing so, the surplus supplies may be destroyed.
That's sort of confusing. What is the articulated policy? And how do you determine what can and cannot be destroyed? There's, there's a stipulation that it can be destroyed, but then there's a, a, another thought says that it's an articulated policy. It seems to me that you have to have an articulated policy before you can vote on this.
So I'm going to ask Maura O'Keefe to comment on it. Before I do that, though, I just want to make sure that it was clear, because I sort of presented it, uh, out of sequence. I did mention earlier on, there is also another section of this policy that carves out firearms as a special case. So commodities like firearms that are treated uniquely in the marketplace may be, may be disposed of in a manner consistent with the purposes of the Procurement Act. And with that, I'll let Maura O'Keefe comment.
So the policy is designed to grant town manager the ability to articulate that, that public policy, and it's going to depend a lot on, on what the supply actually is. There is going to be a different public policy purpose behind disposition of surplus in that manner, to dispose of them, depending on what you're talking about. Is it a chair? Is it a firearm? Is it hazardous substances? The public policy reasons are going to vary, and that's why it's written as broadly as it is, to make the policy fit the circumstances. So here, um, a, as you move on to discussion of the next policy, you'll see that, um, there is a public policy purpose that's articulated in the disposal of firearms policy that has been drafted in a way that reflects the conversation around this policy, the, these proposed policy over the last couple of months. And the driving public policy there for the firearms disposal policy is, um, that this select board in the town has, um, an obligation to do its best to maintain the health and safety of the residents of this town. And, um, the other section of that public policy purpose is to make the best efforts that we can as a town to ensure that surplus firearms do not make their way into the hands of those who should not possess them. And it's those two public policy that drive this, it's that articulated policy that drives the ability either to destroy the surplus firearms or to make best efforts to sell them back into those who are, who are ultimately qualified. Here, a preference to sell them back to law enforcement.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes.
Hi, good evening. Nan Logan, Precinct One, and just want to precede this by saying thank you very much to our police department who solved a very difficult situation last week in North Falmouth. I think it's very impressive. The training paid off. Everybody, um, well, the, it, it came out as well as it could for, for a very difficult situation. Thank you very much. The question I have on this, and I'm so pleased to see that we've gotten to this point, I think it's very exciting. I just wanted to be clear about what it meant, the, the clause that says with the preference to consideration that surplus firearms be sold back to active members of the Falmouth Police Department. Is that a requirement or an option?
So that is in the next policy? I don't know if you, you know, I don't know if the board wants to talk about all the policies together, or... policies together or if you want to hold that question for later. It also ties into the, the status update on the procurement and disposition of these weapons that precipitated this conversation.
So you'll be getting to that answer? Or is that-
Shortly.
Shortly. Okay, yes, good. Thank you very much.
So, so the question to the board is, do we want to deal with these two policies separately? Do we want to vote on the first policy, disposition of surplus materials, supplies and equipment policy, and then consider the policy for the disposal of surplus firearms?
I recommend separately.
Separately.
And we have a motion and a second to accept the first policy, disposition of surplus materials, supplies and equipment policy.
And I'm fine with it the way it is.
So we'll take a vote. We have a first by, a motion to approve by Mr. Patterson, second by Ms. Scott Price. We'll take a vote.
All those in favor?
All those in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, now let's consider the policy for the disposal of surplus firearms.
So the policy for surplus firearms was briefly described by Ms. O'Keefe. Firearms, and I'm, I'm skipping over sort of the introductory paragraph here. Firearms of any value that can be legally purchased, owned or possessed in Massachusetts by anyone who holds a Massachusetts fire identification card or license to carry, that are deemed surplus by the chief of police, may be destroyed in a safe and appropriate manner, or may otherwise be disposed of in a manner that assures that the surplus firearms will be resold to individuals who are qualified to purchase, own or possess them under Massachusetts laws. What, what we've done here is, and I'll read the next paragraph in a moment, but we've, we've carved out two different sections to deal with two different categories of weapons. One category of weapon is, for example, you know, a standard pistol, and I'm not a gun person, so I'm not going to get into details or I'll get them wrong. But the first category is that category that, you know, with the approval of the local chief of police, anyone who has an FID card or a license to carry can purchase that, that type of weapon. So that's the paragraph that I just read. And then there's a, a separate paragraph to deal with those weapons that are more restrictive. And we identify those as firearms that are subject to the so-called assault weapons ban or any other similarly restricted firearms under Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Sections 128, 131O and 131M, as may be amended, that are deemed surplus by the chief of police, may be destroyed in a safe and appropriate manner or disposed of in a manner that assures the surplus firearms will only be sold to individuals who are qualified to purchase, own or possess them under Massachusetts law, with a preference to consideration that the surplus firearms be sold back to active members of the Falmouth Police Department. That is a carefully crafted policy and wording to attempt to address the policy goals that have been articulated by the select board, and we've heard from many members of the community. It's not perhaps as clear as you might want it because there are some Second Amendment considerations. And I don't know if you want to have Attorney O'Keefe speak to those now or if you want to jump in with questions.
Can I ask a clarification, though? Because you, as you read it, you said may, and the written version says shall. Are deemed surplus by the chief of police, shall be destroyed in a safe and appropriate manner, and it goes on to provide the other option.
So it's different for different sections, right. So in the, in the first paragraph that I read, it's may, and in the second paragraph that I read, it's shall.
Okay, thank you, because I think you said may.
I apologize if I misread.
Okay, good. No, I'm quite happy with it, as it says, shall.
Go ahead.
Is it Madam Chair or Dr. Chair? I say Dr. Chair.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
So with all of our policies, generally, we oversee them, so we are able to enforce them. And I'm wondering, how would we manage the potential enforcement of, for example, ensuring that these are resold to individuals who are qualified to purchase them? If we were to, to trade these in or do something with them, how do we ensure that this policy is followed? Or is there, is it just, we hope that it's followed?
Great question.
Well, we have to trust our town manager to execute the policies of the board. Until such time as we feel that that trust has been breached, we just stay the course. And that's, he has the policy and the direction, and he's a professional, so he'll do what the policy indicates.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I wasn't privy to the, the beginning arguments because I was on the other side of the table, so I, I reserved my comments. These, these firearms fall under a preban regulation as it is, and they can only be sold to, to law enforcement personnel by, by state statute.
It's-
Pardon?
I think we know that about Massachusetts.
Okay, well, we, we have some documentation indicating that they would be sold back to the Falmouth Police Department. I just, I'm just curious if any of the other board members have considered the fact that with budgeting and training, that these are identical, only older to the weapons that, that they just took on, and it will afford officers on their own time to train and stay proficient, whereas they might not be able to otherwise, on their own time, at a, at a prescribed facility, as you will. I am a big proponent of staying trained up, and I think that this will give the officers, at least of Falmouth, the assurance that they can go out and train anytime they want at a, at a regulated facility. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you. I would also, I would also add to Mr. Brown's comments that it's incumbent upon the town manager, but also in collaboration with the police chief. And they're both positions that we have people in place for that I think would help us with that enforcement, but I think it's a really good question.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I think it's important to recognize that, you know, the board doesn't enforce anything. We rely on staff. And so we, that's a trust, and, you know, and if we see that that trust has been broken, then of course we can act. But at this point, I trust our staff to do, you know, to execute the policies that we set out.
Any other questions or comments about this policy from the board?
Nope.
Any comment from the public? Ms. Bumpus, we'll start with you.
Captain Bumpus, Precinct 1. It is about trust, and it's about trust, and it's about what happens later on. And this is an opportunity that the town of Falmouth has to say, we could do something more, to say, we think that the gun violence in this country is too much. And we don't want to put assault weapons that used to belong to the town of Falmouth on the street in any way, whether they go to police officers' homes, and then they can get sold later. They could get sold out of state. Other things could happen with them. We have the opportunity as a community, and I think that it was, as Barb Schneider said last time you talked about this, talked about at town meeting, that people wanted something more than just saying, we'll take care of it. They want to make a statement about what happens with these weapons, and that they should not go back out into the community. The chief and I disagree with, on this. I would feel more comfortable with fewer guns in the world. That's where, how I come at the world. I would be happier if there were less of them. I think that these weapons were designed for law enforcement. They were designed for the military. They shouldn't be anywhere else. I wish our police department didn't need them. I would like to live someplace where we didn't. The chief believes we do, we should have them. What we do with them when we're done, the police department has done with them, really matters. He says they are not safe for, to use for the police department anymore. Why would we put them in the hands of even a police officer in their private lives? So I would like to say that they would be destroyed in this policy. I would like that to be the first choice. I think that when you get into the disposal conversation in the next agenda item, it's really unfortunate that an agreement has been reached where that's not happening, even though there was some push and some interest in that happening from the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Doobie?
Can I hand these out to the board members?
Yes. I can pass them down.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you. What you're going to be reading there is a report from a group called the Police Executive Research Forum. This is a group of law enforcement professionals. And it is a report that's, that's kind of shocking. It's, it's on suicide in police departments and the epidemic proportions. And if you turn to page three, you're going to see some highlighted area down at the bottom. It says that we know that the number of officers who die by suicide each year in the United States, 167 verified suicides, this is to 2018 incidentally, exceeds the number who are killed feloniously or accidentally. So that means either in the commission of a crime or they got, they were killed in a traffic stop by an automobile. Suicides exceed that in the police department. If you turn to the next page and you'll see highlighted, risk of suicide among police officers is 54% greater than among American workers in general. So I'm, I'm sort of perplexed at a board member who would say, let's sell what everybody calls assault weapons, but I don't. Let's sell this type of weapon to a group of people who are 54% more prone to suicide than the rest of the workforce in the United States, and then justify that to me. I understand Mr. Zalinski's point, that, that practice does make perfect. These men and women are able to practice enough to make them proficient. Giving them weapons in a high-stress occupation like the police department that has a record that is, is stated by one of its own organizations as incredibly prone to suicide, much more so than the general population, what's the rationale for giving them the opportunity to purchase weapons for their personal use? In essence, these weapons are going to be in their home. Don't forget that everything that you're talking about, safety around children, you're taking a, a military-grade weapon and putting it in the home of officers who have family, officers who are, I'm going to say this for the last time, more prone to taking their own lives than certainly any member of the board here, anybody else in the workforce in Falmouth. So what other workforce in Falmouth would you feel good about selling a firearm to, a legal firearm to? Is there any other workforce that you can conceivably think of that you would say, it's okay to sell a weapon to that group, especially a group that's prone to suicide? And I, I would await a response so that I could feel good. I want the chief to get all the weapons that he needs. If the chief had come and said, we need $186,000 for weapons for the police department, I would have voted for it. This makes absolutely no sense at all, none whatsoever. These weapons should be destroyed. They should never take the chance of winding up in public hands again, and certainly not in the hands of people who are prone to suicide. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doobie. Mr. Fenneran?
Everybody speaks about gun violence, and it is an issue, but if you look at it, well, over 97% of the gun violence that you refer to on the streets or whatever is committed by people who aren't licensed and aren't supposed to have arms to begin with. You're talking about restricting arms sales to the police who have arms anyway. And I mean, as far as your suicide question, the rate for dentists is like the highest in the country, much higher, many times higher than the rate for police officers. You should be trying to keep the hands, guns out of the hands of dentists. It would be more effective. I, whoever gets hold of these firearms is going to be a licensed dealer, and they're going to sell them according to the laws of the state. I just, I'm sorry, I think this has all been kind of a bit of a waste of time. And to even consider destroying something that technically belongs to the taxpayer who is burdened enough already is foolish. I mean, half of these firearms, they're considered assault weapons because they might have a bayonet lug or whatever, you know? Most of the people that buy these arms, they're like hot rodders. I mean, they're going to go home and they're going to modify them. I mean, you could take some of these pieces off and make them completely legal, and in many states they are. I'm, we're just, I'm sorry to say it, but wasting our time, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fenneran. Mr. Brown?
I'd just like to comment that I think that, I'm not really familiar with law enforcement practices, but I think it's pretty common for law enforcement to have the option to purchase their weapons. And I think that it's just one more thing that we would be taking away from our own Falmouth police officers to have an option to purchase back the gun that they're accustomed to using and to have it for their own training or for their own protection of their homes. It's just one more insult to add to what we pile on to the police officer's job and taking away one more thing and just making Falmouth one more reason to not want to come work here as a police officer. So that's my thinking on it. And I agree with your point that it would be great if nobody wanted them and they were getting destroyed. But if our own officers want to buy these weapons, I don't want to take that opportunity away from them, and I don't feel nervous about them sitting there, having these weapons at their house. I think they're the most trained people that are capable of handling the weapons. So that's my feeling on it. That's how I can justify this position.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I grew up on a farm. We had weapons to take care of any number of different pests of different types, protect our livestock. And to me, having the guns is, is part of my growing up years. So if a police officer wanted to take their life, they don't need a military-grade weapon to do that. They must have plenty of other opportunities. So I find your, your argument to me kind of academic. There, there are plenty of ways. I feel much worse that there are so many policemen that do commit suicide. I wish we could provide, and I think our police chief actually does provide counseling to police officers to try to make sure they feel comfortable with their lives and their sense of worth. But I, I find your argument to be somewhat weak, and I don't support it.
Any other comments from the board or comments from the public? Yes, please.
Quick thing here. My name's Trish Mullin, and I am from Falmouth. And I believe that every American deserves a safe place to live. Last month, the New England Journal of Medicine reported that gun violence has overtaken auto accidents as the leading cause of childhood deaths in America. Meanwhile, activists have just shown an transigence to make any meaningful progress to protect our children. The disposition of our Falmouth Police Department's old weapons is an opportunity to make a small but meaningful difference in the trajectory of the tragedy of children dying from guns. Guns no longer useful to the police department should be destroyed. Falmouth Select Board has both the power and the responsibility to be a leader to make a safer America, America for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments from the police department? Sergeant Guthrie?
Sergeant Guthrie, Falmouth Police. I'm also the lead firearms instructor for our department, as well as I'm a lead in firearms instructor for our local academy. So I take training very seriously. It's something I've done my entire career. Mr. Doobie's- Mr. Doobie's reference to police officer suicide, I feel, is irresponsible. We, as supervisors in the police department and the chief, take that very seriously. And we are constantly assessing our officers. And I have personally, as a supervisor, had to take an officer's firearm away from them because of concerns that they may harm themselves. That was their sidearm, not an assault rifle, patrol rifle, assault weapon, shotgun. It was a sidearm. That's what police officers tend to use when they harm themselves. I didn't hear a statistic there, Mr. Doobie, for assault rifles, maybe I missed it, being used in those suicides. I also appreciate you bringing that to the public's attention because it is a very serious matter. I would have also appreciated your attendance at our memorial ceremony, which we had during Police Week. I didn't see you there. That's something that we do, that we honor all of the fallen police officers who have harmed themselves in the line of duty. So we do take it very seriously. And I think that this process is a fair process. I think it's, what we've gone through here is something that can assure the public that we do take public safety very seriously. And we are willing, as members of the police department, to ensure that by purchasing these from a licensed vendor in accordance with law. Any questions for the board?
I have one quick question that might be a tad bit outside the scope of this conversation, but I'm always sort of curious, and there was something in the Cape Cod Times that the Dennis Police Department is doing, and I'm wondering if the Falmouth Police Department has the clinical support that they need.
That is something that the chief is working on. We do have provisions in the recent contracts and through the MPTC, which is the agency that governs all of our training. We do have wellness seminars and training. So that is something that the chief has been pursuing also.
Thank you. And I'm sure we'll look at that again. It was just a thought that I had.
I also would like to reiterate something that was mentioned earlier about training. And I really appreciate the comments and the compliments that we received earlier about how we handled the North Falmouth incident. Those assault rifles, patrol rifles, are something that we used as a tool to bring that situation to the best conclusion that we could. We didn't have any control over some of those circumstances, but what we did have control over, we successfully were able to deal with that situation because of the training of our officers. And as Selectman Zelinski had said earlier, that by these officers purchasing these firearms, it will enable them to be able to do training on their own. And that is something that we encourage them to do with their sidearms, which is their pistols. We tell them all the time, I tell them all the time, as the instructor, one of the instructors, that it doesn't just stop the two days that we go to the range every year with the department. They have to do this themselves, repetition, 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 just like any sport that you play, any other acquired skill that you do. You have to build that repetition and that muscle memory in order to be able to respond in a highly stressful situation. Because when you are in a gunfight, then everything else kind of goes out the window when you rely on your instincts and your training. And this is what, you know, we would like to try and facilitate for our officers, is encourage them to be able to go in on their own and continue their training.
Thank you. Chief Dunn?
Hi. Edward Dunn, police chief. I just want to assure the board, and I also want to assure the citizens of Falmouth. As a police chief, I was president of mass chiefs last year. Police suicide has been in the forefront of police chiefs across the country for several years. It's been growing number, and we take it very serious. That being said, in our department alone, we are working with the men and women to make sure that they are mentally sane and sound. We have, we just recently negotiated with some contracts, mental health checkup. They just have to go speak to somebody. I don't want to know what they spoke about. I just want to know they went. And we also have some other programs that we're working on. And again, thank you for noticing the outcome. Yes, that was a sad situation, but the outcome was the best situation we could have. Even after that, we have clinicians come in and meet with the officers involved in that. And they meet and they talk what happened and how they feel. So we take it very, very serious to keep our officers healthy and safe.
Thank you, Chief Dunn. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this draft policy? Mr. Doobie?
I'm sorry that that appeared academic to you. It appeared quite real to me. And just by way of education, and I completely agree with Sergeant Guthrie as far as what happens in a gunfight. As a personal note, in 1966 and '67, I served in Southeast Asia, and I was in a gunfight almost every single day for 14 months. I know what it's like. I know what you feel like after a gunfight. I know what training for a gunfight is like. I know what it's like after you're done with your service and you're no longer going to be in gunfights. And it takes a long time to acclimate to a real-world situation. The wonderful job that the police force did at North Falmouth was the result, as Chief Dunn and Sergeant Guthrie said, of hours of training. My understanding is that these officers did not have these weapons at home to train with. And I'm sure Sergeant Guthrie can correct me if I'm wrong. But if they didn't have these weapons at home to go and train with whenever they wanted, seems to me that their training was pretty darn good because they handled an incredibly difficult situation the way I think every police department in this country would point to and say, "That's the way you handle that situation," without the benefit of having their own personal firearms to train with. So I'm, once again, trying to figure out how you balance this, how you can possibly just come up with a one-size-fits-all solution. Yes, I understand Mr. Brown's point. Yes. One more thing that we're doing to the police force that prevents the possibility of people coming here to work on the police force. But then you weigh that against the fact that, yes, these guns can wind up in private hands because they can be resold. So it's not a simple cut-and-dry thing that I am against the Falmouth Police Department because I am not. I'm wholeheartedly behind the Falmouth Police Department. But there is a risk factor involved here that you have to weigh. And you can't simply say that I want these officers to practice, let's give them the guns, let's give them access to these guns. And there is no possibility that anything that we haven't thought of will occur with these weapons. It's just, you can't do that. So I think it has to be a very active deliberation before you can decide that, yes, let's sell these weapons to the Falmouth Police Department for their officers to use for their own personal use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doobie. Comments from the board?
Madam Chair, I don't know if Mr. Doobie's aware that he can go to any gun shop in Massachusetts right now and there are assault rifles for sale only to active police duty. So these same officers could go tomorrow to whatever gun store they wanted and buy their own AR.
Okay, we're not going to have the conversation back and forth. Mr. Doobie, you had your opportunity. And so I want to bring the board back and refocus them on the policy and whether they are ready or prepared to move the policy or if they need more time.
Was there a motion for this policy already? I think we did.
No, we did not. I don't believe on this policy. We did not.
I would like to move that we approve this policy.
I second Mr. Patterson's motion.
All those in favor signify by saying... I'm sorry? Go ahead. Come up to the podium, please.
I appreciate all the concern about this really important question. My question remains as far as whether the preference is required or optional. And you said you would address that when we got to this point.
Yes. Yeah. Go ahead.
So, as Mr. Johnson-Staub said, the wording there is very carefully done. And when we were drafting this policy, I raised a concern because the Second Amendment protects not just the right to buy guns, but also to sell them. So firearms dealers have just as much of a Second Amendment right as do gun owners. And I worded it like this, to draw back from placing a requirement on the gun dealers to only sell them to law enforcement because I believe that that might be an infringement on their Second Amendment right. So it's written as a preference and not a requirement.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve this policy. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed unanimously. All right. Acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, consider approval of application from Falmouth Housing Corp. for $100,000 to secure permanent deed restriction to preserve affordability of one existing single-family house located on 51 Esker Place. We have 10 minutes for this.
Yeah, there's... We had an item for, I mentioned it briefly in my preliminary report, but we have the item status on the disposition of weapons. So we, the board has addressed the policies.
Yes.
And if you would like, I can sort of recap what I stated earlier in terms of the status...
Yes, your recommendation, please. Sorry, I missed that.
No, no problem. So, you know, the board had asked for some clarification as to what the, where we were with the status of the purchase of new weapons and disposition of the existing rifles. And what I mentioned earlier is that the chief understood he did have the authority to proceed. A purchase order was issued to purchase the new weapons, and that was part of a procurement, part of a quote process that did include trade-ins. We've provided to the board all of the backup information about the research that was done to identify the value of the surplus weapons. And with the board's agreement, we are ready to proceed with that purchase order. We do have a commitment from the supplier, that was the low bid, for the net cost of the purchase of the new weapons and the trade-in of the surplus weapons. And that's Powderhorn. And Powderhorn has provided a letter committing to sell these weapons only to members of local law enforcement. Happy to take any questions that the board may have.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
I appreciate the information being in the packet. And I don't really have any further questions myself.
And maybe I'm just not understanding the quotes. There's a quote from February 2nd, excuse me, that says, it has market values. Then there's another quote from March 2nd that has the same rifles but different market values. And I wanted to understand the difference between these two quotes and the month difference.
Madam Chair, could we have Sergeant Guthrie respond to that question?
Absolutely.
So you were referring to a quote that was submitted?
Yeah, February 1st from Greg Coleman, Powderhorn. For example, it says that 18 colts were 700 per rifle.
That was, that was an error on his part. That was supposed to be, well, I'm sorry, that's not an error. That's the true market value or an estimated market value of it that...
I see.
The very first that Powderhorn had provided was, we had, they had come to the station, they had inspected the weapons, they, we had sent them pictures. And so I know, I think at one point, he had sent one that had trade-in value on it, and I had asked him, I said, "This is what you want for trade-in? And what do you want to give us for trade-in?" And he said, "Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's the market value."
I see. Okay.
That is what he had provided. I had also, you know, there's other, you know, venues out there that you can get these. I know that Mr. Doobie had talked about the market values and the trade-in values, and we discussed this in the previous meetings. He had also talked about them being less valuable than what the Powderhorn had provided. And there's other websites and stuff that can verify it. TrueGunValue.com, and this one here is from GunBroker.com. I mean, there's various things that we're able to confirm and kind of shore up what Powderhorn had given us because we didn't want to just go on what they were telling us. We want to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Thank you.
We don't need a vote on that, do we? I don't think so, it's a status update. Thank you. Okay, now we can go on to acting as trustees. You want public... Okay, go ahead.
This part of the process, in my mind, was flawed from the beginning. When the warrant was presented to town meeting originally, there was a cost breakdown. The sum, $86,234. And the breakdown on that was, for the rifles, $71,060, slings and swivels, $2,290, magazine patches, $3,600, and magazines, $1,444. Now, there were optics and there were lights that were also purchased, that were called for in the warrant, okay? Those optics and lights were included in the $71,060. That's what the warrant called for. That's what town meeting approved, $71,060. Mr. Johnson-Staub and I have gotten into a number of discussions about bid splitting. When it came time, as far as the bid was concerned, it was brought back to you, the cost of the rifles was $31,000 approximately. That's because the cost of optics and the cost of lights had been taken out of that $71,000. And according to Mr. Johnson-Staub, that is a textbook example of bid splitting. You had an approved amount of $71,060. And then when it came time to have these rifles purchased to stay under the $50,000 limit, which would have called for mandatory IFBs, am I correct, Mr. Johnson-Staub? $50,000 limit would have necessarily mandated IFBs publication on com由buy, publication in a newspaper of local jurisdiction. Am I correct?
There is a $50,000 threshold in the law. That's correct.
Right. So if the amount was $71,060 that was approved by town meeting, why was that threshold not enforced?
So I don't, I was not involved in reviewing this for procurement purposes. Our procurement process is decentralized to the departments. But I would say that just because a town meeting article has a dollar amount on it, that doesn't drive the way that procurement is handled. So it may be appropriate to do it in one procurement, it may be appropriate to do it in two procurements. If the supplier of the optics is cheaper from a different supplier, then that would not appropriately be part of the same procurement.
Then that would not be bid splitting.
These are accessories.
Again, it...
They're part of the initial purchase price.
It depends on, you know, there are a lot of factors that have to be looked at in terms of what's the way for the town to get the best value.
But this seems to me to be a movable feast with bid splitting. When it comes to aggregation, the inspector general has spoken to members of this committee and said that as far as firearms are concerned, all bets... and said that as far as firearms are concerned, all bets are off. You don't have to, you don't even have to consider aggregation as far as that's concerned. Spoke to me and said that, we have email that said that aggregation, from Mr. Cohen, that said that aggregation is merely a recommendation, has nothing to do with, with enforcement on 30B or the inspector general's manual on 30B. So we're back to the same thing with you, you pick and choose what's bid splitting and what's not bid splitting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I did not speak to the inspector general. I think there may be a difference between purchase and disposition. I don't know if you had a conversation with the inspector general about we can disaggregate the purchase of weapons for the purposes of 30B when we are buying weapons?
I didn't, but the general conversation I had with the IG's office is that because firearms are such a unique commodity, and they are, they have their own very discreet marketplace. And the reason for that is because it's so heavily regulated. You cannot buy and sell firearms like you can anything else. And because of that, the IG's office instructed that public policy could overrule the strict letter of the law in 30B. And that there, as long as there was an adherence to a strong public policy, and that the policy maintained the spirit of the law, that it would still be seen in compliance with 30B. So I, while I did not have a conversation specifically about bid splitting or purchase, I spoke with the IG specifically about disposition of surplus supplies instead. The, the theme is the same. Firearms are unique, and they, they don't fall into a neat category under Section 30B of the law.
So from, from that, may I understand, and then I'll, I promise you I'll sit down. Do I understand that the aggregation that Sergeant Guthrie is talking about really is not necessarily something that must be followed? That what we have been saying from the beginning, that each rifle can be considered independently, that the $10,000 barrier has not been broken? Because we don't have to aggregate those rifles. And I see Mr. Johnson Staub agreeing with me. They don't, so...
We also don't have to, excuse me.
Go ahead.
We also don't have to adhere to the $10,000 limit. That's why we have a separate policy for the firearms, because of the latitude and discretion of the board to craft that policy. So the firearms policy doesn't have a monetary limit, because there's discretion there as indicated by the inspector general's office.
Can we not have side conversations, please? If you'd like to get up and speak at the podium, that's fine?
I will stand up. What I said to Rich was, the answer is, you are perfectly able legally, with town council's opinion, to destroy the weapons, and you have chosen not to.
Thank you.
That is my take. I will say, on the, where we are with the bid, I did not do a formal FOIA request. I did request all the information that, and it was acknowledged that I had requested the information when this went out to bid for, and the responses, and I never received them from the town.
The numbers, excuse me, Sergeant Guthrie, again, found, please. The numbers that Mr. Doobie is referencing is something that was provided by Cape Gunworks as an estimate, as a, as something that we can go to town meeting to be able to start that process and, and ask for a dollar amount to be able to buy them. That was, again, for Colt rifles. That was not for the actual rifles we bought. We were actually able to find a cheaper, yet comparable rifle that is now custom-made for us to be able to conduct the training for our officers, both lefty and righty-handed officers, which makes it more versatile for us. And those numbers that he was presenting, I had already told him on the phone when I advised him that Powderhorn had provided the letter that was requested before regarding the sale to local law enforcement. That was what he had originally said would, would satisfy his concerns. He then brought about this procurement process also. Once we realized that the rifles, not the optics, the optics were not part of that price, the optics are actually listed in there as a separate item, and the chief did go to different precinct meetings and had a breakdown of all the items to be able to speak to before town meeting. And I've also heard that the town meeting members have had some say into what happens with the disposition of the used rifles, the old rifles. There were a few members, including Mr. Doobie, that spoke up, but again, that was something that was not an overwhelming message. I'm hearing a lot of talk about, there was a firm message and, you know, some interest and whatnot. There wasn't overwhelming message. There were a few people that did speak up against it. So I, I feel like some of these comments that are, are being put out there by Mr. Doobie are exacerbated and exaggerated. We did get those optics from a state procurement list, which is part of the procurement law. I would have done the same thing with the lights if I could have. Again, trying to do the best that I can to get the best bang for our buck. And I'll leave it on that.
Thank you.
Nan Logan, still in precinct one, still thankful for this conversation. I really appreciate it. A couple short numbers. I speak for over 70 people to whom I presented the dilemma of what we do with these guns, and they all assured me that they would like to have them destroyed. I think I, I sent that list to the select board members at that point. Mr. Zalinski, you weren't there at that time. So, on behalf of them, a couple numbers that I'd, I'd like you to think about. There are 43 states that do not regulate this type of military weapon being owned by private citizens. Forty-three states where private citizens can own these weapons that our police need and are very well-trained to use, and I trust with my life, because I'm here, and you've got my life, and I've got your life, and we've got all that. In those 43 states, there are 20 of those states that do not require a permit to buy one of those guns. So, also think about the current economic situation that we're in. Think about the fact that if you had something that was valuable, and your family was having a hard time buying gas, and your family was having a hard time getting childcare, and you had this, this item, or may, perhaps you bought several of them, that you could trade back to a federal firearms dealer, and that federal firearms dealer could not sell to our citizens, because our laws don't allow it. But that federal firearms dealer can sell that to any federal firearms dealer in any of those 43 states where a private citizen can own that. That's the decision that you're making. We're, we're asking our police to have to make that decision, so that they can support their families. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't want to put that pressure on them. I'd like to see these guns destroyed, and you can do it.
Mr. Fineran, and then Mr. Ridley. I said, what, what's the matter, Catherine? I said Ridley instead of Ripley. Go ahead, Mr. Fineran.
Hi, I'm Mark Fineran again. I grew up in one of those 43 states. I got my first firearm for my seventh birthday. And I, like all my friends who had numerous guns, respected them and never killed anyone. But I think that these people want these guns destroyed. I, as a taxpayer, don't, because of their monetary value, but I suggest that perhaps they could buy them and then arrange to have them destroyed, and everyone would be happy.
They don't have, they would have to have federal firearms licensing.
Mr. Ripley.
I didn't plan to speak, but Barbara Ripley, precinct nine. So I think we're actually talking about the procurement. And, you know, these gentlemen, they risk their life every day for us. And at town meeting, we, we gave them, voted on a certain dollar amount, and then they had to go out and get it. And how many weeks have we been having this discussion now? It, it would be a shame if they didn't get the equipment that they need to protect us. They're buying this equipment to protect us. So I hope to God that we're, they haven't been waiting for us to make a decision, protect our community, because that's what they're doing. You know, we're not talking about destroying guns, we already worked on that one. So we're talking about the procurement. So, as a taxpayer, we voted the money. I don't really care how many bids it takes. They've already said they're going out to get the best price. That works for me as a taxpayer, and they're protecting me every day. So let's let them do their job, continue to protect us, and let's get the guns to our police department. Thank you.
Any other comments on the status update? Okay. We will move on to acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, consider approval of the application from the Falmouth Housing Corp. for $100,000 to secure permanent deed restriction to preserve affordability of one existing single-family house located at 51 Esker Place. I see we have Linda Clark here.
Good evening. Linda Clark, president of Falmouth Housing Corporation. I think you have a little bit of history on, on the affordable house that we actually rehabbed after an expensive eviction. We actually have put into the home about $154,000 in renovations in order to bring it up to a level of sale, which included a septic system, very expensive. We had to basically gut the house, appliances, kitchen, baths, flooring, subflooring. It was quite a disaster. In the meantime, we've discovered that when the house was purchased by Falmouth Housing Corporation back in 2007, previous president Bob Murray, it was purchased due to the fact that the house was going into foreclosure. The original purchaser, as an affordable home, the home was going into foreclosure. The town did not have the ability to find another person that met the criteria, as far as affordability, to buy the house. And the house sat for a little bit of time. Bob Murray stepped to the plate and said, "I will purchase the house, although I'm going to need to rent it." And as you know, these deed restrictions do not allow rentals. The town agreed. What are we going to do with this house? We're not going to leave it vacant. At that point, the town offered $85,000 towards the purchase of the home, with $42,500 due back the town upon the sale when there was a qualified buyer. In the meantime, we rented the home. So here we are today. The deed is expired, so there was no affordability attached to the home any longer. So we have put the house back into a restricted deed, and it's part of the LIP program, it's in perpetuity, it will always stay in the SHI, in the inventory, and we're looking for a little bit of help here. So we're looking for a grant of $100,000. $42,000 of that $100,000 will go back to the town, as promised, from an MOA that dates way back. There's not a, there's nothing at the registry of deeds. And we have a mortgage on the home at $73,000. We're looking for some help from the town for $100,000 for the home. We do have a buyer currently, a single mom, and she meets the criteria, the 80% AMI. And here we are.
Any comments?
I think this is an easy one.
Yeah.
That would be my comment. The only other thing I would mention is, it's noted in my memo, but for the public, the, so the net cost to the fund is going to be $57,500, because $42,500 is going to be paid back by the Falmouth Housing Corp. to the fund. And when that memo of agreement was entered into back in 2008...
Seven, yeah.
Seven. I believe that predated the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. So I did just want to state for the record that the $42,500 will be deposited into the one and only Town of Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, which is the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund.
Madam Chair, a question for Peter. I'm coming in on the back end of this, but is, is there any relief from adjudication from the person that was in there? That they, they said that there was an eviction, and there was damages done, is that correct?
Correct.
There was no adjudication with, and they kind of relieved monetarily?
From the tenant?
Yes.
Yes, I have a 20-year money judgment.
Okay.
It's, that's not going to last, it's for the record.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Patterson?
I'd like to make the motion if I can. I move that the board, acting as trustees of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, authorize the town manager to execute a commitment letter setting forth the terms of a financial award to the Falmouth Housing Corp. in the amount of $100,000, to secure a permanent deed restriction to preserve the affordability of an existing single-family house located at 51 Esker Place.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you for your work, Linda. Next on our list, to consider changes to select board meeting schedule. Does everyone have a copy of the current schedule versus the proposed revised schedule? Any questions around that?
No.
Looks like we would meet in June on the 6th, we'd have a joint meeting on the 13th, we would have June 20th off, because it's Juneteenth, and then we would meet again on the 27th.
Madam Chair, I would just, as a reminder, the, for your calendars, I'm sure you already are aware, but you also have the Mayflower Public Forum on June 8th. So it is going to be a busy month of June.
Can't wait. Do I have any, any concerns around this proposed schedule? And do we need to vote it?
I suggest that we do the extra work, and it'll help us get caught up on our business.
Second.
That's a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I will accept that, the revised schedule. Okay, the review of select board liaison assignments.
So, I'd like to start off by saying that the Transportation Committee has been, I think unhappy with the select board's action or lack of action on their initiatives. They've done a lot of work, they meet every two weeks, and they've got a lot of great ideas. And admittedly, we have not really addressed their recommendations sufficiently. And as the liaison, I feel like I'm partly responsible, or, you know, a lot responsible. And if somebody else would want to take on the challenge of taking that on, I did throw that out to the committee that I was going to offer to, you know, maybe get a new liaison to their committee, if anybody's interested. I will say it's a bit of work, if anybody's up to the challenge. Otherwise, I, I'm happy with all the other committees. I think that they're satisfied with my attendance, and I'm not looking to change any other ones.
It's now an appropriate time to discuss what our roles are, again, in these committees, just to refresh. Would that be appropriate under this agenda item?
Good. It's also outlined in the committee handbook, the role of the liaison.
I think for the public, it'd be good to just kind of say that our role is to attend the meetings and liaise between the board, provide suggestions and feedback on ideas, and bring appropriate ones to the board, as, as we think is appropriate.
Absolutely. And that we don't vote, and that we really aren't there to influence conversations. And that we don't vote, and that we really aren't there to influence conversations.
Right. The primary role is to explain the interaction and facilitate the delivery of their work to the select board.
And share information that might be useful to them in their deliberations.
Right.
Well, I'll say, Mr. Zalinski, if you are interested in the zoning board of appeals...
I'll take it.
I will give that to you. And in the assumption that you would take over Megan, Ms. English Braga's committees, I'd be happy to trade you zoning board for agricultural commission.
You got it.
If that schedule works for me.
Madam Chair.
Fine.
Thank you.
I would ask that I no longer will participate in the affirmative action committee, and I would like to also move the human services committee. So if anyone is willing to take on either of those, that would be greatly appreciated.
I would be happy to do human services. What would you like to trade it for? You can't have affordable housing.
Nothing. I'm actually trying to cut back a little bit, because as I learned from Doug, the role of the chair is, is...
Commanding.
Far more intensive.
Oh, you mean you're going to be busy? Yeah, okay. No problem. I will add human services committee to mine.
Thank you. And would anyone like to take the affirmative action committee?
I am not interested in that committee.
And, and given its status at this point, I am no longer eligible to be the liaison for the affirmative action committee. So we will, if no one...
Is that committee still...
Ask for it, we'll assign it.
Meeting?
Not right now.
Okay.
Anyone else? Mr. Patterson?
I'm happy with the ones I have. I'm very reluctant to take anything more on, honest to goodness. I mean, EDIC is very busy, as well as Conservation Commission, so...
So you're, but you're pleased with your assignments?
I'm happy with those assignments. I can't make all the meetings, but, because of the conflicts that we have, but I'm happy to stick with those, and I feel like I've added, I've provided them with a liaison that works for them. And I, if they complain about it, I'd be happy to discuss changing.
Anything...
Do you see any on Megan's list that are troublesome for you, or not really your field of interest?
Oh. I mean, listen, there's a lot of them, and we have to split them up, and, you know, baptism by fire and all of that. So I'll, I'll take on what I have, make it work.
And as we move forward, if you find out that your work schedule doesn't allow you to meet on some of these, and you want to revisit it, we can always...
I appreciate it.
Come back and switch it up.
Well, it also says, "Attend meetings or read the notes." So if you just, you need to be, stay up on the minutes if you can't make a certain meeting.
And I spoke to Megan about, about some of her old ones. She said that I could bounce some of the procedural stuff off of her anytime, so...
Excellent.
Not once I'm there, you know, getting my feet wet in it.
Right. I've let, I think I've let all of my committees know that if there's a particular meeting they want me to attend, to email me, and I can work it into my schedule with enough notice. And that's how I plan to continue moving forward.
Excellent. Okay, so the only one that we have unassigned is affirmative action, and we can talk about that. All right. We have our consent agenda done. We did our administrative orders. Review and vote to approve minutes of meetings. Public session, January 31st, April 4th, April 25th, May 9th.
Let's see, I've reviewed them, just taking to see, look to see.
I have some edits.
All right. Do you have edits for the meeting of Monday, January 31st?
I do.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
I'm wondering, under proclamation, where it describes Briggs's project, it doesn't say where the project was clearing the bush. I think that was at Nobsko. I might be misremembering the project, but...
No, that's a different scout.
Okay, so that's my point. We should, we should put in there where his project was located, which I hope he said that in, in the meeting. Maybe not? I don't know. Okay. And then everything else? Basically, at some point, we started doing Ms., Mr., Doctor in front of the names.
I have that on mine as well.
Okay, I noticed that was missing.
And edit, it, to me, I think we do, it just, I don't like the way it presents when it just says, "English Braga, O'Keefe."
Yeah, the titles. It's on, it's on the other ones.
Yeah. And the other piece that I questioned on January 31st was, "North Falmouth Elementary School has a sprinkler problem. Until replaced and fixed, the school will not be able to operate." I'm not sure that that's accurate.
It was, I remember being said at the meeting, and it wasn't until after the meeting we learned that it had been done.
It's not accurate. Exactly. So we need to adjust that.
Well, I said...
Just strike it.
I think we should strike it out. Yes. Anything else on the 31st?
No. I would move approval and release for public access, for public access as edited.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Thank you. April 4th?
Let's see. Yeah. I found them to be essentially accurate, so I would move approval and release for public access.
I have a second to Mr. Patterson's motion.
Sorry, I want to make sure I'm looking at the right ones.
It's just a two-pager.
Yeah, that's a short one. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Board to one. April 25th.
Right. I have a couple of edits. Let's see, on, on page two, under Town Manager's preliminary report, you just have a typo there. That should, the very last line should be Peterson, 1T Farm. On page three, and these are pretty small typos, let's see, next to the, the fourth from the bottom paragraph that starts with Jerry Patomas, the last sentence says, "Simple math is likely," and I would say, there's two is's in there. If we dropped the second one, it would read properly. Sorry, where was, which paragraph is that? I'm sorry. It's under, on page two, oh, page three, the fourth paragraph from the bottom, if that is, where it's, the paragraph starts with Jerry Patomas.
Thank you.
And then also the next paragraph, the second line, it says Trish Favouli, and then it says Ms. Favouli. I think it's spelled correctly, incorrectly the second time.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I have a page four. You have anything on page four?
I do not. Go for it.
On page four, under four, it says, "Hearing note read by Ms. Scott Price." It should be hearing notice.
I have an edit on page seven. If anybody else has one?
No.
The, just a question, I couldn't remember exactly, and the context wasn't obvious to me, but there's a large paragraph in the center, and in the middle of that paragraph, it says, "Last year was eight," it says, "It's 800," but the comma's in the wrong place. I assume it was 8,000 runners?
Yeah.
Right.
We should, it's been, and then on the very last paragraph on that same page, page seven, all, all from Falmouth, with the exception of, it says 250, but I think it was 2,500. I thought it was a larger number than 250 that was mentioned.
Oh, that was, that was, if they capped it at 10,000 with the, with the 6,000 deferred plus the 3,500, then it was only going to leave 250 for Falmouth runners, whatever that math was. I think that's right.
Okay, fine. I'll defer to your memo. At the bottom of page eight, a minor typo in the first line of the last paragraph, Jim Pisick stated, "The impact of the runners is, in the community," and should be, is, "a community event." State the impact of the runners in the community is a community event. I don't know. I couldn't make that...
It doesn't make sense.
No, it doesn't make any sense to me.
I think you can get away with just striking the sentence.
I agree.
Okay, fine. That sounds good.
On page 11.
Go for it.
On page 11, at the bottom of the, the italics from the town manager, the last paragraph, Ms. Scott Price asked, that I think should not be in italics, because that's not part of.
Agreed.
All right.
That needs to be, the formatting just carried over too far, but that does not belong in the italics, italicized section.
I think this was 13 pages of minutes, and it was done very well.
Yes, indeed. Right. So unless anybody else has another edit, I would move approval and release for public access.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stay.
Let's see, we have the open meeting on May 9th. There are a few edits on that, but...
Yes, it's on the back.
I'm on the...
I'm sorry, are we on May 9th?
Okay, May 9th, okay. On, on page four, under two, the administrative orders, and under the action, Ms. English Braga's motion approval of administrative order, says B through G, but we have A through G there. Is there a reason why the vote to retroactively approve application for...
Yes. Yes, that was withdrawn.
That was withdrawn. So though it is correct then, okay, thank you. And then on the next page, page five, under public hearings, number one, in the second paragraph, I got to the last sentence, and it just didn't make any sense. You would, you would have another service system with its own assessment. It is not equitable or feasible to add 21 houses to redistribute the project costs with how I, I made sense out of it, so just adding that prepositional phrase. Does that make sense, Peter?
Yeah, I think you're going in the right direction. It...
To redistribute the project costs.
Yeah. To add, I think, I think the point there was to, if, if we were to add 21 houses at the same flat amount that was charged to the original properties that were assessed of betterment, that, that would not be feasible.
So that's, that's why I put the prepositional phrase in there, to redistribute the project cost. That's how it made sense to me. I'll defer to your judgment, though.
We'll clean that up.
Okay. On page seven, in the middle of the page, it says, "Unidentified individual in lieu of the fact," it seems like we ought to be able to come up with a name, and I, does anybody know, sign after this discussion?
I think that's probably Mr. Doobie.
Yeah, I guess it was. So the intent of the board at the time has to do with the same item we discussed this evening.
Does sound like Richard Doobie.
I guess somebody could review the tapes.
Yeah, I'll check that.
Please. And then on page eight, number four says, "Discussion and vote on Falmouth Road Race Incorporated appeal of the decision of the town manager regarding the number of participants for the Falmouth Road Race special event." There's nothing in there that really explains what was covered. So I thought we should add a parenthetical phrase, "See action item under announcements section of the, of the minutes," because that's where it's actually discussed. Either that, or it just gets dropped. The action is actually recorded.
Yeah, they're actually, right. There was no discussion because it had already been addressed, so I...
Right.
Right. There wasn't really an appeal.
Right. Can we just renumber? Take it out? Anyway, that's, it's just, there's, there's nothing there in the way of action. And it wasn't done in that, at that point in the meeting, so...
I would suggest we simply add a sentence that says, "This matter was addressed at the beginning of the meeting."
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, and then on page nine, the paragraph third, I guess it's the third paragraph down, "Analysis of summary evaluation." If you read that first sentence, it seems to me there's an extra line put in there. It really should be continued, so that it would say, "Summary evaluation report, with the exception of the first of the four summary paragraphs, included universally negative comments selected from," I would say, "the board members' evaluations," and I guess it should be members with a apostrophe, possessive. But I just, I think we need to close that sentence up because it's not formatted well. Makes sense, though. Okay, and then on page 10, if everybody's following me along, the last paragraph. In the middle of the paragraph, it starts off, "She has a job with the trial court." And I think we just need to make a separate paragraph and say, "Ms. Braga said she now has a job with the trial court." It's just, okay. And that's my last edit, trying to make sense of the minutes. So does anybody else have a change? I'll be happy to make motion. I move that we approve the minutes of Monday, May 9th, 2022, as edited and released for public access.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stay.
And the last one we have is the executive minutes of May 9th. And I, I don't want to, of course, get into the details, because it is, it's not timely to release this. But if you, I think I can do this, but if you look, let's see, under the presence by a telephone section, this page, the very first page, the, the paragraph that says, "Attorney Moscow's..."
Yeah.
In the middle sentence, I think we need an "of," negotiations of revenue to the And then the last sentence needs to be dressed up to. I'm being circuitous for a reason.
So you're making that into one sentence and eliminate the capitalization of revenue?
Yeah.
I got you.
And if no one else has any comments or corrections, I would move approval as edited and not release for public access.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Town Manager's supplemental report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I mentioned earlier, the Mayflower Public Wind Forum is scheduled for Wednesday, June 8th. That is at 6:00 PM in the Lawrence School. We have had a couple folks ask about being able to participate remotely. I'm afraid we don't have the technology or the staffing for that size of an event to have a hybrid meeting. So I don't know if the board wanted to suggest, or, you know, certainly staff can suggest on the board's behalf, that members, individuals who are not able to attend can submit their comments or questions in writing. I want to be careful not to promise that all comments will be read, or all questions will be read. I think, you know, priority will probably want to, you'll probably want to give priority to folks who are present at the meeting, but if time allows and there are questions or comments that haven't been, you know, pretty much heard already during the forum... much heard already during the forum, perhaps we could have, you know, those, those messages compiled and, and addressed at the forum if that's your pleasure.
Sounds reasonable.
Yes, indeed.
He said it's an attempt.
Good idea.
Okay. And then lastly, I did want to mention a couple of things on the staffing, the staffing and hiring front. As, as we know, all employers in the region and, you know, I think to some extent the country are very challenged to fill some of their positions. And that is certainly the case for the town of Falmouth. So I thought it might be helpful to give a periodic update on where we stand with filling some of our positions. And I will start with some good news. The position of Associate Town Council has been filled. We're thrilled to welcome Brian Tobin. He's going to be starting May 31st. He comes with five years of experience as Associate Town Council for the town of Needham. Has his law degree from the University of Maryland. So we're very help, happy to have filled that position. And I know-
Ecstatic.
Maura is ecstatic to have some help.
I'm sure.
The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Officer position has been advertised as directed by the board. We have not changed that job description because I understood the, the intent was to get that advertised as soon as possible with the existing salary that we have available. Certainly happy to entertain modifications to the job description as we go forward. The, we have a Recreation Program Director position. That's one of three. The, the title is perhaps not clear in terms of the structure over there. So we have the Recreation Director, Joe Olenek, and he has three direct reports and those positions are all called Recreation Program Director. So one of those positions has been vacant and it was offered and accepted. And the start, the start date is not yet confirmed, but that was, that position was accepted May 16th. We have a GIS Coordinator position that Bob Shea, I'm sad to say, is retiring. He has been a fabulous employee for the town and really I think we're, we're ahead of the curve on GIS for most communities our size and Bob has just done a tremendous job. That position has been advertised and I will say that at this point it looks like we may have some difficulty filling that position. So I will continue to keep you posted and we're going, we're continuing to look at ways that we might fill that position, including, you know, there, Bob has agreed to come back on a part-time basis as a consultant to assist us, but that's not going to be sufficient. So we're continuing to work on that position.
Can I ask just a question real quick? In a situation like that where it is highly technical and you really want somebody with experience, can we not use consultants to fill in the gaps when we have a situation like this?
Yeah, we may, we may need to look at that.
Beyond Bob Shea.
Right, right. So, you know, that's among the options that we may need to look at long-term. I, I think from a, I think the, the best long-term solution is if we can find a qualified employee, I think we're going to get a better return on our investment that way. But you're absolutely right. That's an alternative that we can certainly look at. It may, you know, we may need to move some money. That may require a town meeting vote, but it's certainly an option that we'll keep in mind.
I think that it's likely to be a very competitive skill and that's why, why I just thought I'd ask that question.
The Assistant Town Planner position has been advertised with a preferred response date of June 10th. And the Human Resources Director position has been advertised with the preferred response date of June 14th. That concludes my staffing update and my supplemental report.
Thank you. Select Board reports?
Well, I think most of us went to the, the Police Department Recognition Ceremony.
Yeah, we were all, everybody.
We were all there.
Six Select Board members were there.
That's right. That was just a great ceremony and was glad to be able to participate. The Falmouth Affordable Housing Committee, I know Angie was there, met this past Thursday, and are being, are very active and they've sent us a, a letter giving some recommendations to us that we'll have to be addressing at another meeting. And then I, I mentioned already that I did get to attend Logan Mooney's, his Court of Honor yesterday.
Yes. In addition to attending the police memorial service, I attended two different events on opioid use and overdose prevention. One hosted by Health and Human Services. Another one was a community forum that was at St. Barnabas that was held by Reverend Will of St. Barnabas and Rabbi Elias of the Jewish congregation. Really, really vibrant, good discussion about how to prevent overdoses, how to support somebody who's suffering from an overdose and, and basically how to deal with it in our community. So I really enjoyed, enjoyed that as much as I think you can enjoy that type of thing. I also participated in the Walk for Hope this weekend and it was really great to have Peter there on the team. Kim Fish, our new housing coordinator, participated as well. So it was really nice to see the local officials in the community and, and taking part in supporting, I should say, the Walk for Hope is Housing Assistance Corporation raising funds to support their initiatives. Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee, Ed, was not able to attend. He recently had COVID, but he would have been there as well. So we had a lot of good support. They raised a lot of money and it was a lot of fun. Something I should have mentioned several weeks ago, but I kept forgetting, was several months ago I asked about creating an onboarding packet for new board members and Peter and Julian had worked on that. We do have that, that we can give to Mr. Zilinski.
Got one.
You got one already?
Yeah.
Ben?
He presented with me this morning.
You have to sign for it, too.
Oh, nice. Nicely done. So I'm, I'm just really pleased about that. I think it'll be really great.
I was in it for three hours this afternoon.
Wonderful. And I have a very large network of GIS friends because I almost got a master's in GIS. So I will be sharing that with my networks and hopefully we can get somebody in soon.
Super.
Great. Thank you.
I was happy to see in the, the search for the GIS, they're going to include LiDAR technology, which is something that we need to, to bring online. So I'm very happy about that.
Any other reports?
I already reported that Transportation Committee is looking for a resurgence in their work and revisiting, which we will be hopefully putting on our agenda in the near future and kind of recapping the work that they've done and, and see what we can do to implement some of it. Waterways Committee is moving steadily forward with their planning for additional new projects. I guess we want to talk about future agenda items, but that'll be after everybody's reports.
Okay, let's move on to future agenda items.
So I'd like to have a couple more policy discussions. I'd like to get back to the Embarkation Fee Fund and whether or not we can come up with a policy for that. I don't know if there's any other work that needs to be done before we take that up. Last time we wanted to talk about it, there was some kind of complaint or some reason why we couldn't discuss it. If there are any barriers to that, then-
I think we had to resolve a complaint, didn't we?
I think we're prepared to have that conversation.
Okay, so that is one. Another one is, just came up last week, but I guess it's been brewing for a while. The North Falmouth Village Association would like to have us discuss whether or not we can create a policy for implementing speed tables in neighborhoods because I guess they've been asking for it for a while. And it has recently come to light that there should be a policy by the Select Board to deal with that. And another policy I'd like to consider, and I don't know if this is within the purview of the board, but I think that we are probably missing out on some hiring opportunities because we don't have any opportunity to offer work from home, remote work. And I'd like to know if that's something that you as Acting Town Manager would entertain a policy from the board regarding that, or if that's something that, have you considered implementing that on your own?
That's a really important point. It is something that I'm prepared to act on. But let me, let me clarify. I'm not prepared to act on it like right away.
Right.
It's something that we want to be really careful about and mindful of because it just raises complicated equity and union issues. But it is, I, I think that it's the direction that the, the labor market is moving and I think we're going to need to closely examine it and see how we can be a more flexible employer. And I, I, I'll say right up front, there are, the, one of the challenges that we will have is there are some kinds of work that lend themselves better to remote work than others. So that's one of the challenges, particularly in a union, union environment where unions typically like to have one size fits all. If you do it for one union member, you have to do it for all union members. So I haven't had any conversation with the union about that to this point, but it's, you know, it's an area that I would like to explore.
Do we have any employees now who primarily work from home?
We, we don't have any permanent situations right now where employees are working from home. There are occasions where an employee is on a, a leave, a temporary leave of absence, medical leave, et cetera, where an accommodation is made to allow work from home.
So they're on a leave of absence, but they can work from home?
Right. So if there's, you know, if someone is unable medically to be in the office and work, but they're medically able to be at home and work, that is a, a situation that we have been able to accommodate.
I'd like to hear more about that at some point.
So do you need any more direction from the board regarding the remote work policy or is that something that you can take an initiative on?
Yeah, I think, I think I'm going to need some time to work with, with attorneys and give some thought to it. And it needs to be bargained, so certainly we can, we can have a dialogue in executive session about the development of such a policy.
Any other future agenda items from any board members? Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.